Everyone, will you please stand for a moment of silence as our meeting is called to order? Thank you. Will our pre-K guests please join us onstage to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Right there, right there. That's good.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as well.
Thank you to our special pre-K guests and their teachers for leading us tonight. Mrs. Garza, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Chair Seberg.
Here.
Vice Chair Stevens.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Hollingsworth.
Here.
Mrs. Brooks.
Here.
Mrs. Paul.
Here.
Ms. Bresia.
Here.
Ms. WbP.
Here.
And Ms. Island. Thank you.
Mr. Cuffeller, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda this evening?
No ma'am.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the public meeting agenda?
Chair, I move that the School Board of City of Manassas approve public meeting agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Hollingsworth, second by Mrs. Brooks, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries 7-0. Tonight we have superintendent spotlights and announcements. Mrs. Radford, will you please present?
Thank you Chair Seberg. Good evening, other members of the board, and good evening to everyone that has joined us on tonight. I'm so excited about our pre-K students that were with us on this evening. You know, for the last several years, they have led us in the Pledge of Allegiance at our convocation and have always done such a fabulous job. And so, we're doing a spotlight on pre-K tonight, and I was so thankful that Ms. Batista and her team were able to have our students join us. So, as I mentioned, we are excited to place the spotlight on our pre-K program. Ms. Shama Batista serves as our Virginia Preschool Initiative Counselor. She has lots of helpers here with her tonight. Our team is very privileged to have, you know, to serve as a registration site many times for our pre-K program, and it's always such a wonderful thing to see them when they come in, to prepare for school, and then here we are already in April, and they've all grown so much, and they do so many exciting activities in the pre-K world. And so, we asked Ms. Batista and her team to come and share some of that with us tonight. Ms. Batista.
Good evening, good evening. This is Shama Batista. I'm Ms. McDaniel, and we are showcasing our pre-K program with our students who will be class of 2036. So, throughout the year the kids come in, we have fabulous teachers who help them with routines and get them prepared into kindergarten. So, we have some banners to show you what they have done throughout the year, and they will be getting ready to go into kindergarten. So, we have a sign for you that says, "Hands down, pre-K is the best." And then, we have another sign. They're showing you what they have. We have Baldwin rockets, and they have pictures of what they've done throughout the year, through the center times, what they've done during creation time. And then, we also have with the whole school, in celebration of Week of the Child. If we want our children to move mountains, we first have to let them get out of their chairs, and that's what our teachers are working for them, to get them ready and go on to kindergarten, and then eventually graduate high school and continue on to better things.
Ms. Garza, can you pull up her PowerPoint for me, please? Thank you.
So, this is in the classroom, but as you can see, the kids do a lot of things with our creative curriculum, which is led by the children's interests. So, if they like the interest, the teachers will keep going. If the children do not like that study, they will continue with another study that the curriculum provides. So, as you can see in the pictures, they're doing investigation. We've had students be the teacher for a day, so they know the routines. They also do creative things with different types of materials, different types of instruments to keep them with their learning. We've had celebrations for the Fall Fest. The community is invited, so they've done the Fall Fest. They did the Olympics, Special Olympics. They've also done a Spring Festival, where they have the community come in as long as with their parents. And then, we also have the community helpers and guests coming into our program, so the students are aware of who's in the community and who is helping out, as well as community helpers within the school system. And that's our pre-K program.
Thank you, Ms. Batista, and the whole team there. Can you tell me again what graduation year they have?
2036.
Oh my. Yes. Mrs. Paul.
Thank you, pre-K team. Next, we have a student that has made a high achievement, earned a high achievement, to the Football Hall of Fame. I'd like to call Emma Wessel forward. Emma is currently a sixth grader at Mayfield Intermediate School. She is here tonight because she was chosen to be presented to the Commissioners of the Northern Virginia Football League, and they voted her into the Hall of Fame based upon her athletic, extracurricular, and educational accomplishments. So, I'm going to share a little bit of Emma's impressive background. She began playing football when she was four years old, joining her three older brothers on the field by assisting the older players with drills and practices until she reached official playing age for both flag and tackle football. She continues to be on call with the league coaches at all levels to assist with drills and practices. Playing in the tight end, middle linebacker, and kicker positions, highlights from her 2022 season with the Manassas Sharks include defensive team captain, starter for every game, nine offensive pancakes, seventeen tackles, eight tackles for loss in four games, and five onside kicks. Her coach, Godfrey Benson, said Emma is smart, a player who is coachable in all phases of the game, a fast thinker who makes plays at a high level, tough, plays the trenches, and disciplined with character, rarely making the same mistake twice. She is highly involved in extracurricular activities, including sports camps, volunteering and assisting with younger students, and supporting her family's vending machine business. Academically, she's an honor roll student at Mayfield and a member of the Advanced Choir. Emma recently served as the honorary captain for the DC Divas Season Opener against Pittsburgh Passion. The DC Divas are a local professional women's tackle football team. So, on the screen, you can see the Congressional Record presented by the Honorable Gerald E. Connolly, naming Emma as a State Youth Player of the Year. Congratulations, Emma. Also tonight, we have some Osborne athletes here who had phenomenal seasons. I have a couple of coaches with me tonight who will share highlights about their team's accomplishments. First, we will have the Osborne High School Swim Coach, Jean Ryder-Cum, followed by Tim Weaver, who's the Osborne Wrestling Coach, and they will let us know about some of the exciting things that happened with their players this season.
Hello, I'm Jean Ryder. This is Casey Simpson, and we are the swim coaches. We have a couple of standout swimmers we want to talk about.
We have Patrick Epifanio and Lila Brown. So, I'm going to start with Patrick Epifanio. He is a four-year Varsity Leonard winner. This year, it all came together for Patrick. His accomplishments in the pool this season are numerous. He placed fifth in the 200 free, second in the 500 free in the district championship. At the regional championship, he placed fourth in the 200 and second in the 500. At the state championship, which this was his first year going to state, he placed 15th in the 200 and was all-state placing sixth in the 500. Out of the classroom, Patrick is a true student athlete. He's a student at the Governor's School, and we are proud to announce that he will be attending the Rensselaer Polytech Institute next year to further both his academic and his swimming career.
All right, our second swimmer is Lila Brown. Lila is a second-year letter winner for Osborne. This year, she was the district runner-up in the 100 free and was the district champion in the 50 free. At the region championship, she placed second in both the 50 and the 100 free. And at the state championship, she was all-state in both of her events. She placed fifth in the 100 and seventh in the 50. She also set a new school record this season in the 50 free. This record was set before Lila was born, so we're super proud of that, that she can put her name in our record book at Osborne. Just like Patrick, Lila is also a student at the Governor's School, so she is a true student athlete. She's a junior, so we're excited to have her back for one more year at Osborne High School.
At this time, we're getting ready to move into our Apple and Pear Award winners, but if our students would like to go ahead and make an exit now, parents, you can do that. Oh, I'm sorry, Tim. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I said, "Followed by." You're right. I'm so sorry. I forgot that quick. Please forgive me.
I think we're all stuck on that 2036 thing, right, Mike? Jeez, holy mackerel. Tim Weaver, Osborne Wrestling. This is my 20th year at the helm of the Osborne Wrestling Program, and I got to take a shout-out first off to all the guys that have helped me: Coach Zenowitz, Sullivan, Riley, Williams, Jennings, McCarthy, Vitale, Lasher, to name a few. Without those gentlemen helping me, these three wouldn't be here tonight. There's no doubt in my mind. Speaking of these three, Adar Malik in the middle, finished the year, only wrestled two years, but more importantly, he'll be entering the United States Marine Corps this summer, serving our country. Adar Malik. He was our Most Improved Wrestler for the year. Pablo Melendez couldn't be here tonight. He finished third in the state, and he will be wrestling for Avery University in the fall, Pablo Melendez. Hector Aguilar, here on the right. He finished district champion, finished his fourth year at Osborne Wrestling, and may at the states for two years in a row. Hector also is an established businessman. Matter of fact, he has an auto detailing business that he runs. He just washed my car yesterday morning, did a fantastic job. He'll be going to Nova for two years to get his associates in business. Next to Adar is Luis Reyes. He'll be attending Avery University in the fall to wrestle, and he finished sixth in the state this year. So, Luis Reyes. These are great young men. Give them a round of applause, please. Thank you.
And I'm so sorry for the oversight, guys. Thank you so much for being here tonight. Now, for those that would like to make an exit, you can go ahead and do so. Get our babies home. Pre-K students, thank you for being here tonight. And families. Okay, thank you for your patience. Our final spotlight for tonight are our Apple and Pear Awards. We are pleased to present the winners tonight. The Apple Award winners represent members of our instructional staff in the division, and each person was nominated by one of their peers. Our Pear Award nominees are employees who support the teaching and learning environment in many other ways, primarily behind the scenes, and like the Apple Award, they too are nominated by their peers. I will go ahead and start with Baldwin Elementary Apple Award winner, Melanie Lyon. Melanie Lyon is a very hard-working and passionate fourth-grade teacher. She goes out of her way to find engaging, educational, and fun learning experiences for her students. She has amazing classroom management, and her students clearly love her. Congratulations, Ms. Lyon. Next, from this school, Jenny Dean Elementary, Amy Keen. Mrs. Keen is a second-grade teacher here at Dean. Her rapport with her students is second to none, and the respect and admiration they have for her is evident from the moment you step into her classroom. She cares about our students and the Manassas community beyond just those in her classroom. Congratulations, Mrs. Keen. From Hayden Elementary, we have Melissa Jones. Melissa Jones is an enthusiastic pre-K teacher. Her students are prepared for kindergarten and beyond. Her instructional delivery is engaging, student-focused, and filled with age-appropriate, high-level, quality methods. There is always love, laughter, and learning in her classroom. Thank you and congratulations. Round Elementary, Katie Bombara. In her first year as a math support teacher, Katie Bombara has already made a major impact on student learning and growth. Her hard work, detailed planning, and preparation are felt in the classroom extending throughout the building. Her positive attitude and relentless pursuit of student growth and achievement has influenced students and staff alike. Congratulations. Next, from Weems Elementary, Amy Gordon. Ms. Gordon is a third-grade teacher at Weems. She is the embodiment of the word educator. She not only supports her school team with ideas that help meet the needs of students, but is a constant example of leadership. Her nominator is grateful to be a recipient of her contributions as they have improved their work as a teacher. Congratulations, Ms. Gordon. From Baldwin Intermediate, Dr. Meredith McCool. Dr. McCool is a member of the Cool Kids Club, as you can see. She's a fifth-grade teacher. She is articulate and humble, never once assuming students cannot be successful. She assigns herself task after task and completes them for the team's success. She is generous in sharing every resource she finds. She truly loves being a teacher, and it shows. Congratulations, Dr. McCool. From Mayfield Intermediate, Carrie Mifsud. Couldn't be here with us tonight. And from Metz Middle School, Laurel Kalinowski. Ms. Kalinowski is a math teacher at Metz. She has a good rapport with her students. It shows how much they respect her. She's very well-respected in her school, and the Mustang team congratulates her on this honor tonight. Congratulations. From Osborne High School, Shannon Hilton. Shannon Hilton is new to Osborne, but not to MCPS, but her impact to the school as a special education teacher has been monumental. She initiated having the first Special Olympics at Manassas City Public Schools, and she worked tirelessly to organize it with Osborne serving as the host site. Through her hard work, leadership, and initiative, the students in the adapted curriculum program were able to participate in an unforgettable experience right here at MCPS. Congratulations and thanks. And from our central office, Muffin Wilkowski. Ms. Wilkowski plays an essential role in MCPS as an organization development specialist. Ms. Wilkowski is always willing to jump in on tasks and is ready and willing to lighten the load for her colleagues. She works across departments to meet the ongoing needs of everyone at the central office and communicates frequently with staff and administrators in all schools to support their instructional efforts. Congratulations and thank you. These are all of our Apple Award winners for this evening. Congratulations to all of you. Okay, and now we have our Pear Award winners. From Baldwin Elementary, Denise Bujatosa. Ms. Bujatosa is a school psychologist who has shown exceptional dedication to applying her deep knowledge about the science of learning and the science of reading for targeted evidence-based instructional intervention and progress monitoring of third and fourth grade small groups. She is integral to the collective mission of Baldwin's educators, who have the desire to ignite learning in all students. Congratulations. And from Jenny Dean Elementary, Candace Francis. Ms. Francis is one of the first happy, smiling faces to greet you in the office where she serves as Dean's School Administrative Associate. She is very friendly and helpful. If she can't find it or doesn't have an answer for it, she'll find it for you. Jenny Dean is fortunate to have Ms. Francis as a part of their Dolphin family. Congratulations. From Hayden Elementary, Jessica Morales. Jessica Morales is a caring and effective special education instructional assistant at Hayden. She works so hard with her students every day. She's always willing to help out wherever she is needed, and every morning, she has a smile on her face. Hayden is thankful for her contributions to students and their families. Congratulations. Round Elementary, Alyssa Carroll. It's been said it takes a special person to be a special education instructional assistant, and Alyssa Carroll is that person. It's clear she loves her job. She works so well with the students and attends to their every need. Even when a situation has the potential to be stressful, her first concern is with the students, their safety, and their happiness. Congratulations and thank you, Ms. Carroll. From Weems Elementary School, Jessica Glusline. If you have met Jessica Glusline, Administrative Associate, you would soon find out that she is a walking encyclopedia of Weems Elementary. She brings fresh, new ideas to the table all the time and is always willing to support others' ideas for the good of all the students and families. She always makes sure Weems families feel valued and understood. Congratulations, Ms. Glusline. From Baldwin Intermediate, Orlando Pizarro Mascort and Jose Hernandez Chavez. They're working. That's right. They couldn't be here tonight, but they are the fabulous custodial team, dedicated at their school, and so, their school speaks so highly of them. And they couldn't choose between the two of them. They had to make them as one. So, congratulations. So congratulations to them and their absence. From Mayfield Intermediate, Sammy Pierce. Sammy Pierce is the school psychologist at Mayfield Intermediate, and they speak very highly of her as well. Metz Middle School, Kelly Sheldon. Kelly Sheldon was nominated because of her kind treatment of everyone at Metz Middle School. She is always professional whenever she interacts with staff, students, and all members of the community. She is clearly someone who makes Metz a great place to work and learn. Congratulations, Ms. Sheldon. Osborne High School is next, Justin Lucchessi. Justin is our Technology Support Specialist, or T-Spec, at Osborne, and I know the work that is done through him is very much appreciated, so we congratulate him in his absence. From Transportation, Bill Cunningham. Bill Cunningham has made the Transportation Department better since he began working for MCPS seven years ago. He often takes the time to write his elementary students' special notes when they are behaving exceptionally well, or if he knows they have earned an accomplishment at school. How sweet is that? He ensures that his students arrive to school safely every day and is a valued member of the Transportation Team. Congratulations to you. And those are all of our PEAR Award winners for this time. Thank you so much and congratulations.
Next up on our agenda would be board committee reports. We have none at this time. And moving along to citizens' comments. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Seeing and hearing none, we will go along to our consent agenda. Can I get a motion, please?
Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as modified.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens and second by Mrs. Brooks that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as modified. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Tonight on the discussion agenda, our first item up will be some old business. Osborne High School Evolve Technology Update.
Good afternoon, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, School Board members. Mr. Goffeler, thank you for having us here. Share a few slides here about our Evolve system and preventive technology and update you on where we're at with it. Let me move this. Okay, February 28th, we had the Evolve security scanners installed at Osborne, and then we trained our staff. We piloted the program for a week, and then March 20th, we started full implementation of the preventive technology scanners at Osborne. So it's a little bit over a month now. Some of the protocols we put in place were to communicate to student staff and the community about the expectations of the scanners, including how you can get through them, what the process would look like, any safety or health concerns. We had parent meeting as well, sent out information in newsletters, and we set defined times for our load of our building. So 7:50 to 8:20 is when we can have these stations properly staffed, so students can come into building and we can scan them, as well as any staff coming in at that time. We did do site visits to look at other places, as well as you know, and all visitors are scanned upon entry, and all our students load the building between 7:50 and 8:20, and then anybody after that would go through our entrance one, and all visitors or any late-arriving students would be scanned as well after that. The current data we have is average about 2,045 persons scanned. This is in that timeframe between 7:50 and 9 o'clock in the morning with an 83% clear rate, which is considered good. 10 to 15 is great, but that's a good rate. Right now, we're on the mid-level of the detection system. The more, you know, if there's a threat or something, we could always raise the sensitivity of the system. The clearly fluctuates as students have learned the system and have adapted to it. It's improved some. Yesterday, we're at 86%, today, we're at 83%. So it varies a little bit depending on the day, but the average is 83%. That means that about 17% of the people coming through get what we call a hit, okay? When they come through. Most of our hits are for common school items such as computers, eyeglass cases, water bottles, three-ring binders and that. Every once in a while, you may have, you know, lacrosse stick, baseball bat, something, you know, that they're bringing in, school-related. If there is a hit, the students go to the resolution tables. You can see the pictures there. I know you've been there. All the resolution tables are manned by school administrators, and we would conduct a secondary search at that point. Those searches are really looking for weapons, is what we're doing. We're not digging into every pocket that might be any type of, like a school search for something other. We're looking at school safety. Obviously, we want to get the students in the building, but we also want to make sure everybody's safe. So some of those searches, you might be looking for, you know, a weapon. You open it up, and there's something in plain sight that might pop up that's in violation of our code of conduct. Obviously, if we open up a bag and we see some contraband or vape or something, we have to follow up with that code of conduct violation and notify the parents. Even though the search didn't intend that, if it's in plain sight, obviously, we're going to deal with that. As far as weapons, a lot of people say, "Have you found any weapons?" And it's, you know, have we found knives? Yes, we found knives, but like, I have to qualify it when I say it. We found, for example, one student brought in a tray of brownies for the band when they were honored for their superior rating and earning a blue ribbon. They were going to celebrate, and with that tray of brownies was a table knife. You would sit on your table, not like a Cutco knife, but a regular flat table knife. So that hit, and of course, we confiscated that knife. And, you know, the teacher had another way of cutting with a plastic knife or whatever, but it wasn't, I would, it wasn't a weapon. You know, she was actually bringing it for some other reason. So it has had hits on that. We haven't had any guns or anything like that found on the hits. We've obviously had our SROs come through with their weapons, and we annotate that and log that in, but other than that, we haven't had any students or visitors bring any weapons into school at this point. One of the outcomes of the interactions in the morning that I did not foresee was the interaction, the personal interaction with every student coming in. And some are surprisingly very excited, and I shouldn't say surprisingly, but happy people. Not everybody's a happy person in the morning, I get that, but that type of interaction in the morning has been a blessing. I think it fosters what we call our One Osborne, caring and inclusive culture that we, you know, they know we care about their safety and them as a person. So oftentimes, the students come through the same entrances, right? And the same staff is there screening and going through that process, so you build up a relationship. And it may be a simple fist pump, or hey, how you doing? Or, you know, but sometimes it leads to other conversations. So I didn't foresee that happening, but that's been a positive interaction to start the school day. The, it's almost a forced eye-to-eye hello, how you doing type of thing, but it's been a positive outcome of the first month of using the scanners. So, so far, we've been able to load the building at a reasonable rate. The lines have not been long. I attribute that to a couple of things. One, we have three entrances that are equipped that we use, the entrance by our commons area, our main entrance, and our JLC entrance. And also the fact that we have a half hour of staggered time where people are being dropped off. So those two combinations allows us to load the building without excessive lines at this point, where people will be able to get in, still have time for breakfast and get to class. That has not been an issue. I would like to commend the students. I think they adapted the most and learned the system. And I've seen, I call it the new way to carry backpack, but you'll see the kids wearing a backpack on their front when they come in, because they can pull out their computer quickly, pass around the table, and put it back in. But they've adapted very well, so I want to thank our students for doing that. And then the staff training, cross-training has gone well with it as well. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer any follow-up questions on our system.
Questions or comments from the board? Mr. Hollingsworth.
Are all the machines at all the entrances monitored all day?
No. So the machines, we monitor them during the load time from 7:50 to 8:20. All the entrances are locked in our building, all the entrances except those three, okay? And then those three entrances, the JLC, the commons, and the main entrance are open from 7:50 to 8:20, and those are manned at that point. After that, we lock the other, we lock the JLC entrance and the commons entrance at 8:20, and we do not man the stations at those two entrances at that time, once the door is secured. We do man the main entrance, even though the door is locked, people buzz in, that one is still subject to search, and people still go through the scanner throughout the day. So after 8:20, there's only one entrance, their machines are manned at that point for the rest of the day. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question. I was at, I observed the very first day, which I felt went pretty well. The lines actually went a lot faster than I thought it would. It was, I figured the first week would be a big, huge learning curve. Knowing that we were going to be having this conversation today, I went by the school this morning and observed, and then this afternoon and observed, and yeah, in my view, any of the kinks that were felt the first week had been totally ironed out. Question, I was not able to see a transition between classes when somebody goes from, during the day, not, not in the morning or in the evening after everybody's released from classes, but in transition from the main building to TLC or vice versa. Are they, is there somebody manning that side door, knowing that they've just come from TLC and going in, so we don't have any concerns about any outsiders coming in?
Right. So what happens is their goal is to screen everybody once in the morning, but not to have a student have to go through multiple screenings, right? So that parking lot and door is manned by our allied security staff throughout the day. They maintain that parking lot presence in the west wing doors, we call it, so that the students traveling from JLC through the west wing would have already been scanned in the morning, don't have to be scanned again. But that is monitored by the security so that no visitor could jump in that line, if you will, right? So it's almost like an imaginary fence, if you can imagine, through that parking lot where the security monitors that. Now, if someone went around to the main entrance, they'd be scanned again, right?
Right, that's what I observed this morning. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Spall?
Yes, thank you, Principal Flugrath. My understanding has always been that we're the first in the state to have this system. Is that correct, to your knowledge as well?
To my knowledge, we're the first in a DMV area. I think there's others in the state that have similar technology, but not the same as us. And I know there's been visitors. We've been, I like to call us the flagship school of the DMV. We've had some of our neighbors, including Manassas Park, Fairfax County Government, Fairfax County Public Schools, Prince William County Public Schools, to name a few, that have come by to observe what Manassas City has started and led the way on. I like to say we're the tip of the spear. So I am proud of Osborne High School and Manassas City Public Schools leading the way in school safety, not only for our students but our staff, but it's clear that other divisions in the area are following our lead.
That's what I was looking for, to see that other people have been visiting you and you've been entertaining those questions. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Spall. We got, I was in fact asked to speak on it at our principal's conference this summer because there's been a high amount of interest throughout the state on how this works.
Great, well, we appreciate the extra effort that you've put in to make sure that it's a smooth transition.
Thank you.
Mrs. Bresia.
Hi. So this is, it's old business technically for the board, but it's new business for me. It's the first time I've ever been able to address the topic of the Evolve scanners from the day it's here. And so I wanted to just briefly revisit. Ms. Williams was asking you about the breezeway entrance there, and I didn't quite understand. So that is not manned during the school day, or is manned during the school?
Right, we have people in the parking lot, the allied security, throughout the school day.
So why are there scanners at the breezeway entrance if that's not?
Well, we put scanners there in the case of an emergency situation. We have to secure the building or shelter in place, or a lockdown situation. I think we would, we would then man that scanner as well, because it is an outside entrance into the building, and I think depending on the threat level, you know, we would need it.
Right, because we keep talking about the three entrances and the three scanners, but when you actually walk through Osborne, there are four scanning stations. There's the main entrance, the commons, the breezeway, and the JLC. And the breezeway is only there for special circumstances?
Correct. At first, we weren't sure how it's going to work at first. We weren't sure if we're going to be able to scan, we're going to scan kids between every class change, if that was doable, and the way we, when we rolled out in a pilot, we realized that, working with the Evolve folks and our own school security, that was the best way to deal with it.
Okay, interesting. I do wonder if there's, if we could get a price break going from four to three if we're not using the fourth one. Do, are kids able to scan in with their student IDs? Like if they encounter a locked door, are student IDs able to open those?
No.
No, just staff IDs, okay. I also visited Osborne this morning, and I parked my car, and I saw there was allied security outside the commons entrance. This was 10:45 this morning. So I was like, okay, I'm not going to go through there. So that worked as intended. And I decided, let's see if I can get into the Johnson Center. So I walked to, you know, to see if I could get through the main entrance of the Johnson Center. There were two of your security officers who were out there talking to each other, and... and they did not talk to me. And a student who was on their way out of the JLC at ten forty-five in the morning, which is not a class transition time, let me in. And of course, I walked through that scanner and there was no one there. I walked through the breezeway, through the scanner that we're not using and observed that I could get into the Osborne campus pretty easily and without too much effort. And I don't have the most threatening profile, I will admit that, you know, I have a, you walk with confidence and you're a middle-aged white lady, you can go a lot of places, but it was a little concerning to me that that was so easy for me to do. So I would, if I could do it, you know, other people can do it too. I've heard other people say that coming in even through the main entrance, you know, if you're not coming in during the load time and the person at the desk there is busy, you can just walk, you can just walk right through and no one stopped people there. So I wouldn't, if we're going to do the scanners, I want to do the scanners. You know, I want them to work as intended. So I share this feedback with you. I ask for your reactions, you know, is this, it's not, obviously not the way it was supposed to work, right?
Yeah, well, thank you for bringing that to my attention. I appreciate it, yeah. And you're right, what should happen in that situation is the security at that point that was in that area, you said walked by, should have addressed you. Students are warned about opening doors for others, and I know it's somewhat courtesy in some, you know, households open door for somebody, so I get that, but they are, you know, warned not to. Now, why the student was leaving at ten forty-five could be a variety of reasons. It could be they were checking out or, I don't know, I'd have to look into that, why that student was leaving at that point, whether they had a, going to see their counselor, going to the main office, or they were checking out of school at that point, I'm not sure. But what should have happened is you would have been, the security at that area would have approached you at that point.
So I did notice when you were giving your original presentation, you said, oh, we have found knives. And then you told us a story about one knife, the brownie tray for the band.
Right.
So I just wanted to follow up and ask if there were any other knives that were found.
Yes, now, we haven't found any knives that you would associate with like a code of conduct violation. We did find another, it was related to their CTE course that they were using. But yeah, that was it. It wasn't anything that met the threshold of like a code of conduct violation.
And what is, what happens if a gun is located?
So if we find a weapon, like a gun, we would immediately notify our SRO. Obviously, we confiscate it and our school resource officer would come over at that point. We would then go into our threat assessment protocols, notifying our central office and if, you know, go to the proper type of lockdown or shelter in place until the area was secured.
Thank you. I know I can be a little, you know, I don't, I want to acknowledge that there are many excellent things happening at Osborne High School. You know, yesterday you presented in front of the city council, all of the, you know, wonderful glow-ups that happen there. You know, there's over 2,000 kids there and there's a lot of things that go well at Osborne that are not nearly discussed enough, you know, relative to some of these other unpleasant things like guns and knives and all that stuff. So I do want to close out this questioning period with saying that, you know, I really see and acknowledge all of the great things that are happening at Osborne, but this stuff is important too. And I want to make sure, you know, we have these scanners, we're paying for them, we have our security officers, we're paying for them, you know, let's make sure the next time that there's a surprise visit that I get intercepted to the right place.
Well, thank you. I welcome the feedback and safety and security is near and dear to my heart, so I appreciate.
Mrs. Brooks, sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I just have one quick, you know, clarification question. Did you have your badge on?
I mean, I had it kind of. I had it kind of out, but I didn't have a lanyard on, so.
It could have just identified you as an employee.
Right, well, employees are supposed to be scanned coming in as well, so, you know, and a lot of violence incidents are employees or, you know, former employees. Yeah, it's not, everybody gets scanned, that's the, that's the point.
Thank you for your question. Vice Chair Stevens.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Flugrath, for sharing. I do know that, you know, the spotlight is kind of on us because we are the first school to use the Evolve technology. And I do know we may have some representatives of other school divisions watching right now to see how things are going and see how the rollout has been. So with the scanners, if we, because we've had this happen before where there's a threat that's been made against the school division. So in an instance like that, you can change the levels of the scanners so that they're more sensitive?
That's correct, Vice Chair Stevens. We can do that at the school level, right on my computer or even right on the iPad at the station. We can up the sensitivity level.
And is it safe to assume you already have a protocol in place? You can't necessarily share that protocol, but you do have a protocol in place in case there is an issue or an incident?
That's correct.
And then if, let's say a weapon is found, like, let's say a gun is found, that's worst-case scenario, that's something we obviously don't want, is it also safe to assume that you have a set protocol? That protocol generally involves the Manassas City Police Department? And that's a communication between the two parties, the school and the police department as part of the response to a gun being found at school?
Correct, and that, that's really part of our crisis management plan. And even though we might have a different way of finding the weapon, the plan is still the same as far as how the notifications go.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure the public is aware of that, that this isn't something where someone goes through the scanner, it has a hit, the hit turns out to be a gun, that we all start a kind of running around without a protocol and a plan in place. But that is something you have in place, and that's not something you can share with the public, correct?
Right.
Or even us.
We have, our crisis management plan is something we can share with, we share with our central office and work directly with them.
Okay, great, well, thank you for that. And I just wanted to comment on, you know, sometimes you don't realize the benefit of things when you put them in place, but the fact that now every student who walks into the building is being greeted by an employee. You know, when you listen to and you read research and you talk about research on the importance of building relationships and giving students representation in schools, one of the easiest, biggest pieces is that individual greeting. And, you know, you can go on social media and you see all these videos about how teachers in schools have built a positive relationship and have created a positive atmosphere and a positive community. And one of the things they, they always point out is that individual greeting. And so I think that's, that's something that we don't talk about, but I think that's really cool. And that kind of makes that, that teacher mom in me really happy to hear because those kids are no longer a face without a name, they're a person. And, you know, someone remembers them every day and can say, hey, how are you? And then in times where that student may be under stress, that educator, that administrator is more likely to recognize and step in earlier and faster before it truly turns into a serious crisis. So that's kind of like that hidden silver lining to having to do this, so that kind of really excites me. So thank you and thank you for the work that everybody's doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Stevens. Mr. Flugrath, I got to join you and many parents at the recent PTSA meeting. And this was a subject you were giving an update to the parents on, and I just want to echo some of the thoughts that Vice Chair Stevens had. The parents were very excited. They've gotten nothing but positive comments from their kids, and they commented about the relationship building that this has caused. And again, I just want to thank you, thank your staff and thank all of your students for going through this and working through this pilot program and for being a, what did you call it, a showcase school?
A flag, I like to say the flagship.
Flagship school for this program. Oh, Vice Chair.
I just have one real quick question. So back when we were first discussing a contract with Evolve, one of the questions we asked was what, can we move the scanners around? So right now, we don't. They're all stationary in set places. But if the need were to arise, could we move them around?
Yes, that's correct. We have practiced that with the one in the west wing in particular, but yes, they can be moved if needed.
And if necessary, can they be moved outside?
Yes.
Okay.
That would include outdoor events or stadium event, we could move it outside.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flugrath. We enjoyed your presentation and appreciate you keeping us updated.
Thank you all, appreciate it, thank you.
Next up on our agenda for student achievement, Dr. Laura Goldzung will present information about Manassas City Public Schools' summer programs.
Thank you.
No, I was waiting for that.
Okay. Hi, good evening, Chair Seberg and Vice Chair Stevens, members of the board, Mr. Gaffeler. It's hard to believe that summer is upon us. May first is less than a week away. So tonight, I am eager to share with you an update on the summer programming that we have for our students starting in just a few weeks. Summer school will be offered by invitation for students in grades two through eight. In addition to reinforcing critical reading, writing, thinking and problem-solving skills, the purpose of summer school is to re-engage our students with our schools. We know that motivation and engagement are a key to attendance. And we know that attendance is a keystone habit that contributes to on-time graduation and success beyond school. So we are looking to re-engage our students to build those relationships that we were just talking about with Mr. Flugrath. Summer school staffing is being finalized this week, but as of tonight, we have thirty-one teachers who are ready to serve, get ready, four hundred and sixty-five students. That's how many spots we're going to be able to offer. Two hundred and ten students for grades two through four and then additional two hundred and fifty-five students in grades five through eight. The student-teacher ratio is going to be fifteen to one to allow for small groups and focused support. Students will be provided transportation, breakfast and lunch. We're going to hold this in two different locations. So at Baldwin Elementary, we're going to host grades two through four. At Mayfield, we'll host grades five through eight. Our amazing assistant principals are going to serve as our summer school administrators. So Mrs. Amy Blint is leading the efforts to provide summer school opportunities for our students at Osborne High School. With approximately twenty teachers, Osborne High School will provide credit recovery, they're going to provide summer acceleration courses and assessment remediation and testing support for students. The team will identify students as grades are made final and SOL testing is complete. So as soon as we know what those students need to get those verified credits, rising students that are going into tenth, eleventh and twelfth grade, they can take two high school courses for recovery, meaning they will repeat the course. They can do that at no cost if they failed that course. They may take one new credit to get sort of ahead of the game with their schedule and that is for a fee of three hundred and fifty dollars. So potential courses that are available, English nine, ten, eleven and twelve, earth science, biology, chemistry, algebra one, two, geometry and algebra functions and data analysis, that's also called AFDA, USVA history, USVA government, world one and world two. So we think we're going to be able to offer all of those things. And one of the best parts of the summer, summer graduation is tentatively set for August the third. And as soon as I finalize that date, we get that, I'll get that to you. So extended school year will be provided to students who are determined in need of continued instruction by their IEP team. ESY will meet at Dean for ECSE, Baldwin Elementary and Mayfield. So ESY this year is going to run concurrently with our summer school and in the same location. We believe that this will provide a more inclusive and authentic experience because same-aged peers will be in the school building with our students who are participating in ESY. There will be opportunities to collaborate, opportunities for more inclusive experiences. And it is also a more authentic environment when the halls are filled with the sound, right, of children working and teachers teaching. In addition to summer school, MCPS is offering a variety of camps. So communication about registration was sent to our MCPS families through multiple, multiple avenues. We've got Connect Five calls that have gone out, the online school newsletters that are the smores. Invitations were sent through remind messages and flyers, and all of the flyers had a QR code so that you could register right through your phone. Information was provided in English and Spanish. Just the art symposium is made possible by a grant from the Virginia Commission for the Arts that was matched by matching funds from our division, from MCPS. So sports and arts camps are limited to sixty participants per camp, and then I believe the field hockey, basketball and cheer camp is about twenty-five students per, and so that would get us to one hundred and ninety-five students that would be serviced by these So Footsteps to Brilliance. So for our smallest learners, our youngest learners, we have some exciting things for them this summer too. So every student, actually pre-K through third grade, has an assigned code in Footsteps to Brilliance. There are two opportunities for summer enrichment and support through Footsteps. They have something called Summer Climb and then they have Virtual Summer School. So Summer Climb, everything is standards-based, there's literacy units, game-based methodology, so we, sometimes they call that gamifying the learning. And there's a data dashboard that allows teachers and parents to monitor student progress. So Summer Climb is more, let's just say they sort of log in and they find a fun activity to do and they can kind of pick through some activities that is intended to maintain their learning, right, and get them ready for their next grade. Virtual Summer School has more of a, kind of a little calendar they can follow with different activities, and so I would say that's a little bit more structured, is self-paced and, you know, parents can monitor that. The school can print the parent letters to send home. The letter can come home in English and Spanish. And the letter has instruction on how to download that app to their phone or their tablet, however they want to access that, and it will have their login information. So everybody already has an account, so we're happy the schools can help you get that account set up. But additionally, all students pre-K through first grade will receive a set of sidewalk chalk. And that sidewalk chalk is also going to come with some suggested activities. It'll be printed on cardstock and we're going to bag all this up and give it to the teachers to send home with the kids. These activities are going to help build early literacy and numeracy while we encourage them to go out and have lots of fun outside. So the sidewalks of Manassas City will be beautiful this summer, I'm sure. And who doesn't like a good summer book, a good summer read? So we want to say thank you to our librarians who have curated a list of suggested reading selections for the summer by grade band, by school band. They have a list for everyone. The lists feature the 2023-24 Elementary Virginia Reader's Choice selections, there's a list of classics, there's some new favorites, there's links to additional lists and resources. For example, the lists that are put out by the Prince William Public Library System, there's lists that are suggested by Scholastic, and also the American Library Association Youth Media Award winners. So we have links to all of that. These lists will be made available on our websites, our school websites, but the kids can also contact the school librarian for details or further recommendations. So we are looking forward to a busy summer for Manassas City families and students, and I'm happy to answer any questions that I can.
Thank you, Dr. Goldzung. Questions or comments from the board?
I just wanted to say thank you. I can tell by your presentation, the thought that was put into it, and something as simple as- I can tell by your presentation the thought that was put into it, and something as simple as sidewalk chalk is an extraordinary idea. Over the pandemic, while I was out walking my dog, my neighborhood was full of sidewalk chalk. And so something with a plan for the summer sounds like a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hollingsworth. Mrs. Brooks?
I was basically going to say about the same thing. It's obvious you guys have put a lot of work into these programs, and I'm happy to see so many opportunities on different, you know, levels and different interests and everything for the students in our community. So thank you. And sidewalk chalk rocks.
Yes, thank you. And, oh yes, my son took advantage of the summer SOLs. Helped for that week. It was very helpful. So I always appreciate the summer help in many, many different programs for our students. You mentioned that you have thirty-one teachers eager and ready. Are you short any, or is that all you need?
Fingers crossed, knock on wood. We have to confirm two more new hires. One, I think, is for a second-grade position, and one is for a sixth-grade position. They have both given us a verbal, "Yes, I'm so excited." What's great about welcoming a new teacher to our division in summer school is that they get to know their colleagues. They kind of learn the ropes a little bit in the buildings. They make relationships because relationships are important for everyone, not just students. It's important for our new teachers to really build that community for themselves. And so, knock wood, we are fully staffed for second through eighth grade. We had planned to have five teachers at every grade level. There are some, and I don't want to misspeak, but there are some grade levels where I have four, and the other, we moved up. I think that's in seven and eight, but I can get those numbers to you. But we're very grateful to our teachers who are just as excited to get re-engaged with the school as we are for getting our kids re-engaged.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you for your questions. Mrs. Spall?
I just wanted to share that I have had the opportunity to look at the summer reading lists and share them with our Manassas City library. And they are currently ordering extra copies of all the books that are on our list so that they'll be ready for our somewhat early start to summer compared to the other school systems. So that's exciting.
Public service announcement. Get your library card.
Mrs. Bressio?
I commend Ms. Spall's foresight on that. Good work. And also, funny enough, my own children have been, I do not have any sidewalk chalk at my house right now, and my own children are looking at me like I'm the worst parent in the world for having forgotten that. So I'm glad that other parents in the Manassas City system will not be caught in the same straits.
Yes.
So who qualifies for summer school? Who is invited?
So summer school identification is done through a rubric. The teachers have identified, so we start with students that are performing below, that are performing below grade level in reading and math. And we have a Google, there's a rubric that we have translated into a Google form. And so the teachers are asked to identify those students. And then based on the rubric, we have levels, basically level one through four. Level one being a student who's identified as being below grade level in reading and math and considered to be disengaged from school based on attendance. And so we, so that's, so basically, kids are prioritized for invitations based on how they are scored on a rubric by their teachers.
And so invitations go out to level one, and if there's room for going on?
We have a rolling invitation list. Yes, ma'am. We will not let one seat go unfilled.
If the, how many of our first-round invitees typically take us up on the invitation? Do we have that down?
So I have a little bit of anecdotal that I can share with you because I was just this morning was sort of sorting through because all of that information comes in through a Google form. And I had sorted for one of our elementary schools. And so because we have a fifteen-to-one ratio, and we know that we have four or five teachers per grade level, then we know how many students we have, you know, I can accommodate this many second graders. So every school then is sort of given their allotment of you have this many second-grade seats. So I was looking at one school after it had been sorted, and all of their level ones would have been invited, with a few of the level twos.
Okay. But I mean, once the invitation is extended, and if a level-one child or family says, "No, I don't want to come," or they don't provide an answer at all, I'm just curious about, you know, because the level-one students are identified as, "We really, you really need some extra instruction." And so if those students and families say no at the first pass, is there any follow-up on the part of the division to be like, "What's the barrier? Can we help you?" You know, is there, "Did you know there's food?" Or, you know, is there any further discussion, or once the answer comes back, "No"?
So I can only speak from my experience when I was a principal and when I was an assistant principal. And it is our expectation. And I think it is really, it's a way that we do business, is that we understand that the personal connection is important, that that phone call is important. Look, if you're going to be out of town and you're traveling with your family, that's great, right? Like, that's important. That creates the whole child. But that phone call from the teacher, from the parent liaison, from the assistant principal that says, "Hey, we really want to see you this summer." Is there, is it, did you not know there's a bus, right? We're running a bus. We're going to feed you breakfast and lunch. We're going to, you know, and so, yes. And that's certainly, we're meeting, not this Friday, but the next Friday with, before the invitations come out as a committee. And that can be something, that will be something that I talk with the schools about. But in my personal experience as a leader in the division, that we make an effort to make that personal connection.
Okay, that's good to hear. So if summer school starts, someone says, "Yes, I'm going to come," and then it turns out they're not coming, do they lose their seat to somebody else is what's, how does that?
Typically, we call. We do an attendance call. You have, it's a little bit, just like we roll in the beginning of the year, where we'll call and we'll say, "Hey, today was the first day of, you know, of summer school. Are you planning to come, or maybe you just couldn't come today, or did you miss the bus?" We just try to find out what is that barrier, or maybe they forgot. A lot of, you know, we get into, it doesn't take long for, as a family, as you know, to kind of get into summer mode, right? And we kind of shut off the alarm, and so we can make that. And then if they don't, if they are surrendering that spot, we will go ahead, even if it's the first or second day, and go down the list and invite somebody else. Yeah.
And do our summer school spots, does this, does this match the demand that? Do we reasonably have a balance between the demand we have for summer school and the spots we have available for summer school? Would we ideally, in a perfect world, have more? Is it hard to get kids to come in for summer school? What's our balance there?
So again, I'm going to just speak from my experience with this because I don't have any hard data in front of me. But what, our process has been, let's identify, I had, you know, I had a budget. I had a budget from my supervisor who said, "This is, this is the line item from the budget for summer school." We did the math and said, "This is how many teachers we can pay for." And then, then can I hire that many teachers? And then based on that, we invite students because we want to keep that low ratio so that they are getting that intensive support. What I, from what I can tell with looking at the rubric and looking at the spreadsheets, right now, we have a good balance. I can't answer with certainty that if I had an unlimited budget and an unlimited number of teachers, how many students could I get in, right? But I feel like we're, from looking at the rubric sort and what I, who we have on level one, two, and three, one, two, three, and four, I feel like we're serving the students who are in the most need with the number of teachers that we have this summer.
Okay. And so summer school, I mean, I remember back in grade school, and summer school was like a punishment. Everybody was like, "Uh-oh, if you don't shape up, you're going to go to summer school." How does, how do we, and that was twenty years ago, more than twenty years ago. So I'm wondering, how does summer school feel now? Is that still the reputation of summer school? Are we trying to introduce some fun? Like, you know, what's the day feel like in summer school?
I'm so glad you asked that question because, you know, I was there, I was there more than forty years ago. And yes, it's always been depicted in the media, depicted, you know, it's always like the kind of a punishment thing. And we want to provide a really fun, engaging, motivating experience. So our curriculum and planning is around project-based learning. It is interdisciplinary at each grade level. We are really focusing on reading, writing, working collaboratively, engaging with the community, writing about things that are important to them. We're, we do walking field trips. We go and explore Manassas City, and then we write about it, and we talk about it, and we present about it. And so the kids are so busy engaging and producing work, demonstrating learning, synthesizing their thoughts, that we want it to feel more like a camp environment, right, that's academically focused. We really have to clear the shame culture around summer school and understand that this is an opportunity for us to connect deeply with kids, to support, and maybe help them discover what they're passionate about as they go into the next school year. Because some of our kids, you know, they're seventh and eighth graders, right? They're, they need to sort of decide, start to think about, like, what electives do they want to be engaged with in school? How are we going to reignite in them this love of learning? So I'm glad you asked that. Yes, we're going to have a project-based learning focus.
Okay. Well, that's good. So I wanted to ask you to speak a little bit more about the difference between summer school and extended school year. This is for the benefit of people who are maybe watching, who need more explanation on that.
Absolutely. I'm happy to do that. So summer school is the opportunity that we really identify for our students who are receiving instruction in the general education classroom. ESY, Extended School Year, is the opportunity to extend the instruction for students who receive special education services. And so students with an IEP, where their team has decided that the student, in order to maintain a level of skill to access grade-level curriculum, needs to extend the support for their IEP goals and objectives throughout the summer. That if that student didn't receive instruction between May and late August, that that student would lose some of the skill that they need to access grade-level curriculum. And so it is intended for some of our students that have some more goals that address, typically goals that address communication, daily living skills, or skills that they have just mastered. Say we've got a kid who, right at the end of May, has really just learned the letters of the alphabet, right? Or, you know, has just mastered a skill of numeracy development. And we don't want that skill because, because if you don't push through and practice that with specialized instruction, we could lose that skill and then have to spend part of May, part of September, trying to regain that. So it is really intended to provide intensive, specialized instructional supports to get that kid from May to September. And an IEP team is the only group that can decide that that student is in need of those services.
Okay. And what does ECSE stand for? That's a question for me and for the?
Early Childhood Special Education. They are, they can come, I'm looking at Brian, "How am I doing, Brian?" Okay. ECSE, we can have them as early as two, right? Earliest two years old for early intervention services prior to starting school.
Interesting. I thought it was three. So turning to the other enrichment opportunities, so I know that we subsidize programs at the Art Factory. I was just wondering the mechanism by which that happened. Yeah, I don't, I don't see it laid out, so I'd just like more information. Because it looked to me, when I was considering summer camps for my own kid, my kid was not old enough to, yeah, my child is four, he needs to be five. My child will be a Manassas City public school student. But there did not seem to be a screen on the Art Factory subsidized camps for MCP. You know, like, you could be a private school student and attend these subsidized camps. That's correct?
So I'm going to have to get more information and get that back to you.
Because ideally, I would like it for our kids.
Absolutely. I'll see what I can find out, and I'll send that information.
So I have questions now for, on the Footsteps to Brilliance. Are these on division devices that kids take home over the summer, or are these on personal devices?
Personal devices, and they have, the letter that we send home will give directions on how to download that. It can go onto a smartphone, or a tablet, or a laptop, whatever they have access to.
Do kids actually use Footsteps? I don't, I'm thinking about myself, and I don't know that I would have ever logged on.
Right. It's kind of, this is an opportunity for us to, I think our pre-K students are the ones that use it the most. But everyone, pre-K through third, has a login that can be activated. So when I ask, and I don't have the usage number in front of me, and that is something that I can get to you, the metric on that. But when we do, I asked, I was actually here at Dean all day at CLT's today, which was awesome. And I talked to their kindergarten about it, and I asked about their usage, and did they know that there was Summer Climb? And, you know, I was asking them a little bit about the chalk and how they wanted it packaged. And they said, "Fully." And I said, "Would you like me to come and put it in their backpack?" They said, "Yes, please." But I said, they said they kind of use it on and off. So I think it's more of letting our community know that that resource is there and sending those letters home for them, just to, it's almost like a reminder, because we've had Footsteps.
Does it cost anything additional for the division to be continuing, to be holding open spots that people are not using?
I know it's crazy.
Footprint to Brilliance has not cost us the division anything. It was paid for several years ago. And it was a license that was in perpetuity once, that was a lifetime, a lifetime payment. So that was done prior to me, and it was several years ago.
Oh, okay. That's good.
It's great. And the Virtual Summer School and Summer Climb, again, are free to everyone in pre-K through three who has, who, we just need to get them to download, so we can work on that letter for them.
And I know, for summer reading lists, I know this is controversial in education, whether or not, you know, earning prizes for a certain number of books and yada. Yeah, I know this is a controversial topic, so I'm just wondering, do we offer any track, you know, any logging or incentives for a number of books read or not?
So that's a school-based decision, but there have been popsicle parties sponsored by school librarians in August when kids come back, if they've got their, their, I think it's the Prince William Library System has a summer reading program. So I'm just going to say that's a school-based decision.
Gotcha. And you have survived my?
Happy to answer questions about this. This is the good stuff. It's about teaching and learning.
Vice Chair Stevens?
So I just wanted to talk for a minute about the project-based learning. I think it was last summer, we were able to come visit all of the summer programs. And I don't remember who all went. We loved it. And I was lucky enough to have a child who was in summer school last year at Baldwin. And I just wanted to talk about some of the cool things the kids did because it's not summer school in the sense that we've always thought of summer school. It was all project-based learning, and I remember one of the lowest grade levels, they did like Community Helpers. And they actually had different members of the community come in, and they got to meet them, got to interview them. Then they created their own Community Helper. Then another grade level had to, their final project was to make a brochure for someone coming to visit the city of Manassas. And each group had to pick one thing in Old Town Manassas that they wanted to highlight in their brochure. And one of the things they got to do was they got to go to the farmer's market on Thursday. And the kids had photographs from it. They bought things there because Baldwin is literally like across the street. And then the kids, I guess, that were going into fourth grade, their groups made biomes. And there was, it was biomes, wasn't it? Yeah. And so there was a lot of discussion and debate amongst the members of each group about who would get to take the biome home at the end of summer school and whose biome was the greatest. And then we were able to go to Met's, and Met's did a mock city council. And each group at Met's had to come up with a service project that they wanted to have in the city of Manassas. And they worked it out completely. All the different students in each group, they were all different members of the city council. Every group had a mayor. School board was invited, city council was invited. We, it ran like a real city council meeting, and they even had citizens' comments time, and so people could go up and ask questions. It was the greatest summer school experience I think the kids have ever had. I know it was kind of new going into project-based learning, but from a school board member, from a community member, and from a mom viewpoint, it was an absolute success. from a community member, and from a mom viewpoint, it was an absolute success. I didn't see a single kid in there who wasn't happy and wasn't enjoying every minute of it. So, I have to say kudos to the program last year. And if it's a repeat this year, I have no concerns that students aren't going to come and that they're not going to be engaged, because I think if they're going to be there one day, they're going to love every minute of it. And I know last year, they got to take home lots and lots of books. Is that a possibility again this year?
We're looking at those books too.
Yeah. So, yeah, so last year, the kids got to each pick out 10 books of their own choosing to bring home. And they brought those books home in a backpack on the last day and they loved it. I mean, I think I helped stuff some in backpacks. So, it was, it was really just awesome. It was phenomenal. I'm excited to hear about it again this summer. I'm excited to get to go visit, because I loved every minute of it. So, busing breakfast and lunch. We're busing, we're serving breakfast, we're serving lunch.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, is that just for our summer school kiddos or for the kiddos who are in the enrichment camps?
Transportation for the arts camp and for the sports camp. Those are, they're going to have a sort of a express bus system where they can be picked up at their neighborhood elementary school. And then, they will be bused to the location where those camps are happening. I think the arts camp may be happening at Met's. We're still trying to nail down that with all of the, you know, revisions and additions that are happening in the building. We're looking for space. So, I think the arts camp is going to be at Met's. The sports camp is going to be at Baldwin Elementary. That's June 5th, 5th, 6th, 7th through the 8th. That week, both of those camps are happening there. I have to get back with you on the food situation, on the lunch and breakfast for those two camps.
Okay. But definitely for our kiddos who are in summer school.
Absolutely.
And for our kiddos who are doing E S Y.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. What about devices for our kiddos who are in summer school?
Okay. So, the device plan, I've been working with our I T department and Mr. Bobby Barrett and Robert Sandstone have been, they have a plan. And so, the kids are turning in their computer, their devices this year. So, the devices that are at Mayfield and the devices that are at Baldwin Elementary will be used by the students who are attending summer school at those locations. So, they'll have a device to use. Well, because of the awesome project-based learning, there's going to be a lot of writing and producing and so, they'll need those devices for their research.
Great. And then, just a quick question about E S Y. So, there's two different kinds of E S Y. Site-based, which is in the school building with the other students, which is what you spoke about. And then, mutual, which is the decision between members of the I E P team. Will we still be offering the mutual to some of our students who may not be able to get into the building?
We're going to invite Mr. Maziac to the podium.
It's all based on I E P teams. So, the majority of our students do participate in the in-school, but we always have what we, you know, students who qualify for other reasons. And we work with them individually. It may be one-to-one, it may be a small group, working on a specific skill we're trying to accelerate, remediate, or work on. I mean, primarily, we're focusing on, as Dr. Goldsung alluded to, we're trying to prevent significant regression. And we really want to address anyone who's got to a critical juncture in their program. It could be a communication, it could be academic, whatever that nature is. We don't, we're not quite as advanced as Dr. Goldsung is. I think we're going to be in good shape with teachers, because it is E S Y season. This is when those I E P meetings are being held and they're making those determinations as to what students need it. I know we have a boatload of I As, which is a good problem, that have applied. But we'll be in good shape. We face the same challenges every year. I will tell you that we do stay at Dean, because I love our custodians. Our E C S E program has lots of stuff. And we did move it once on pallets. And I vowed I would never do that to our custodial staff again. So, that's why we kind of stay at Dean as much as we can. Obviously, if there was a big project at Dean, we would find a place to do it. But there is just a lot of stuff for those little babies. So, to answer your question, yes, we address all aspects of it, whether they come in the building or we do it through a home, or even in a coffee shop, or somewhere in the community.
Great, thank you. Now, for our students who are in summer school, Mr. Maziac, this may be a you question as well. Do we invite students to summer school who have I E Ps, who may not need E S Y? And we ensure that all of their I E P accommodations are in place for summer school?
That is a wonderful question. And I'm glad you asked it, to steal from Dr. Goldsung. I think for the first time, because we're running summer school and E S Y simultaneously, I'll be honest, before, it was a competition, who could get posted first to get the teachers. But doing this at the same time, we naturally have special educators in the building. So, any student who doesn't necessarily need E S Y, but meets the qualification for summer school, we would have access to special educators to make sure accommodations or any specialized thing a student may require in summer school, so they would have a successful experience as well.
That's, that's great. And I think that's something new for us.
That, this is the first time we've run simultaneously.
Yeah, that's great, because it gives those kiddos the same opportunities they would have during the same school, during the school year to be successful. So, that's great. And then, so, thank you, Mr. Maziac. Footsteps to Brilliance, that, I feel like that has been around for a while, but it's changed since COVID. Did it used to be more of an, and forgive me if I'm wrong, because I just feel like it's been around for at least 10 years. That used to be more of a site-based instructional program that we utilized for our pre-Kers?
So, my recollection is that it was, is it eight, is it with us eight years? I mean, when I was an A P. So, that's going on eight, nine years ago. That was when we brought that platform here to the division. So, it was always intended to be accessed at home and in school. There was some, like, it translated to, this was literacy support at home. It had the really great little toggle, so it could be read in English and then in Spanish. And it has the one-to-one correspondence with the words in the way that it's highlighted. And then, children could also create their own stories. It had a lot in, in the, within the website. I don't remember, and again, I don't have the hard data in front of me, but I don't remember them having the summer climb and the virtual summer school. That may be something, and Mr. Cuffeler might be able to speak more to that, but that may be something that has come out since, since COVID.
Yeah. I feel, I feel like it has, because I know we were using it prior to COVID. Now, my last question. You all will be inviting us to come visit summer school, correct?
Yes.
And to see the presentations at the end of summer school session?
We would love for you, the dates are here in this presentation. We would love for you to drop by and we will definitely give you an invitation to come to the formal presentations. To your comment, the project-based plans for each grade level have, they've done some reflection on what worked, what didn't work, what needed to be tweaked a little bit from last year. And then, we will be teaching those. And that's the best kind of lesson planning, is we reevaluate what we've done, what worked. And then, now we're, because it's a new set of kids, we can do that same project with them. And, you know, we've had the, the project planning is really been supported by our content coordinator team. And all of them. P E, arts, math, language arts, science, social studies, and then, Mr. Vargas from our Gifted. We have, all of them have had voice and they have been, in smaller teams, planning those. And they've been having a good time planning them, so we know we're going to have a good time teaching them. And then, that's the whole point, is that the kids have a great time learning them. So, look for those invitations. I'm looking forward to it myself.
Well, thank you very much. And I know the kids loved it last year. I know we all loved getting to go see it. But literally, I haven't seen kids that happy to be inside a school building over the summer, ever. They loved it. So, I'm excited for it this summer, looking forward to it. And I hope anybody who gets the invitation says yes.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Dr. Goldsung?
Couple more questions. I'm so sorry. We're still doing discussion. I have seen the Manassas City Police Camp advertised. Is that another enrichment program or is this, we're not including it in this or?
There are so many other opportunities that haven't, like, because we've put these slides together, since we've put these slides together, other things have started to come across the radar of, oh, remember, we're also doing...
Yeah.
That camp has always been a great collaboration between the Manassas City Police and the school division. So...
Yeah. I saw it advertised for the intermediate students, middle school and high school.
They always have such a good time doing the forensic unit.
Yeah. Do we know if we're going to have fire camp or do we know of any others?
I don't know yet.
Okay.
But I think that this is not an exhaustive list yet.
Okay.
And so, it would be fair to say you'll be getting an update from us.
Thank you. And then, another clarification about the breakfast and lunch, summer feeding. If a student is not enrolled in a summer camp, will they be able to come to the school to get a meal? Or is that done under separate...
That is the summer, that is the summer nutrition, the summer feeding program.
Do we have any...
Okay. So, we're going to, we're expecting the dates from, from Montoya.
Okay. I think that's all the questions for tonight. Thank you so much for sticking with us and providing all this information to us.
You're very welcome.
It looks great. Looking forward to it. Thank you, Dr. Goldsung. Okay, we're still on discussion agenda. Item C, Finance and Operations. Mr. Andy Hawkins, Executive Director and Finance and Operations, will present the proposed F Y twenty-three, twenty-four student fee and charges, food service fees and charges, building use fees, and the fee waiver guidelines for our discussion.
So, good evening. On the chart that you have attached, it's not a lot of changes. We don't have hardly any fees anymore. We certainly, we don't have any athletic participation fees, any class dues, any musical instrument fees. We've eliminated all of those over the years. So, it's not much changes from, from last year. One thing that I do want to bring to the board's attention is that we are proposing that we continue on with having no, no charges for food service, breakfast, lunch, or dinner for a F Y twenty-three, twenty-four school year. As you may remember, we were worried, we were concerned about this and whether or not we would be able to make it financially. We have reviewed our surrounding jurisdictions and ours and we, in our financial statements, and we believe that we'll be fine for, for at least a twenty-three, twenty-four school year. We'll have to reevaluate every year. So, all of our schools, all of our meals will be free to all students. There were really no other changes that were made throughout this document. I don't, I don't know if the board would have any question, concerns, or comments at this time. Most of the fees that we have on here are for, you know, cost replacement, you know, or for damage that a student may do, a lost library book, damage to textbooks or technology or something to that nature.
Anything else? Any questions for the board? Statements? Comments?
Hi, Andy. I'm Mr. Hawkins. I actually don't have any questions at this time. I just wanted to be a little cute, I guess. I know I spent a lot of time today on questions, so thank you for this document.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Will that come before, oh, Vice Chair Stevens?
I just want to say, Mr. Hawkins, you and I have had this discussion off and on many times and you know it's near and dear to my heart. I am very happy that we were able to provide our students with free meals again this year. I really hope we can do it in twenty-four, twenty-five. We will have to wait and see. We'll have to wait and see what the federal government does and what the General Assembly does. But giving our kids access to free meals is just so important. So, I really thank you and your team for figuring that out and allowing us to extend it.
So, a lot of what is going on is because our, the acronym is C E P, is Community Eligibility Program. And it's for our parents who have applied for, or served under TANF or SNAP. So, we want to encourage all of our parents to go out and to apply for the benefits that they deserve or that they're in need of. And that will help us greatly. Our C E P numbers have increased over the years. And that's what's helped us be able to do it financially. There are some schools that they have gone down and some of them in our poorest areas. Greens and Hayden, for example, have gone down significantly from what they were a year ago. Osborne has gone up significantly, you know. Most of our schools have gone up in the C E P participation. So, I just want to use this opportunity to encourage our parents to go out and apply for the benefits that they need, so that that will help us pay for their children's breakfast, lunch, and dinner.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think that's it. The fees we'll see on a future agenda, will, it'll be on a consent agenda or action agenda in a coming meeting?
Well, that's up to the board, which will, I would imagine it would be on, what these typically are on the action agenda item. But if you would like for them to be on consent, we could do that as well.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. We're on the action agenda now. Every spring, the Virginia School Boards Association Business Honor Roll provides a way for school divisions to say thank you to local businesses for their support. Each division is given the opportunity to adopt honoring three local businesses. Staff will present the attached, these resolution naming Virginia Tire and Auto, Professionals by Design, and Peetin Accounting Services to the V S B A Business Honor Roll.
Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas waive the second reading and approve Resolution R twenty-two-three dash O three, naming Virginia Tire and Auto, Professionals by Design, and Peetin Accounting Services to the twenty-two-three Virginia School Boards Association Business Honor Roll.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, second by Mrs. Spall, that the School Board of the City of Manassas waive second reading and approve Resolution R twenty-two-three O three, naming Virginia Tire and Auto, Professionals by Design, and Peetin Accounting Services to the twenty-two-three Virginia School Board Association Business Honor Roll. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries seven-zero. Thank you all. Next up on our agenda is board member comments. And I will go first to our student representative, Mr. Beebe.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. First, I would just like to say congratulations to all the people who are recognized tonight for spotlights, including the pre-K students, the O H S students, and the Apple and Pear Award winners. Secondly, I think there is a band concert going on tonight at Osborne High School, so if you're able to attend, then please try to. And please continue to support all of your students, teachers, and parents as we get closer to the end of this school year. Thank you.
Thank you. One meeting left for you, right? One more meeting. We've appreciated your contributions to our meetings very much. Mrs. Brooks?
Thank you. I just want to also say congratulations to all of our wonderful staff and teachers who were recognized tonight and, you know, swimming, wrestling students who are just doing phenomenally along with many other students in this community. And how cool is it that, you know, was it Emma? Yeah. That Emma won that football Hall of Fame. That's, I mean, that's just, that's great. And thank you to everyone. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brooks. Mr. Hollingsworth?
Thank you, Chair Seberg. Yeah, the NFL draft is Thursday. My commander might need a linebacker, so we're going to reach out to Emma. I'd like to give a congratulations and a shout-out to Osborne for another successful and safe prom. I was planning to stop by, but my daughter says she doesn't care what my position or title is. No chaperones for her. But I also want to shout out the after-prom committee, all those who put all the work in, and all the parents that joined in and helped. I swung by there and there was a lot of games and activities to do. And I also realized how old I was, because it was past my bedtime. So, I apologize to any parents that I spoke to that I seemed incoherent. I apologize, it was past my bedtime. But again, it was a great time had by all and congratulations to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Brezia?
I first wanted to congratulate the future class of twenty-thirty-six, which includes my oldest child. My youngest child is class of twenty-thirty-eight. I did the math myself recently. So, that's really something to think about. But that was a wonderful presentation. Great to learn more about our pre-K program, to see our Apple and Pear Award winners, to see, you know, wrestling and swimming and let's see, who, Emma Watson on her amazing football career, you know, a very impressive... football career. Yeah, a very impressive showing tonight. I also wanted to give a shout out and a thank you to the folks who are on our consent agenda, who have donated to the schools, our, under our gifts, grants, and bequests. Several generous donations to our public schools were included in that consent agenda, so I wanted to offer my own thanks for that. This is part of Manassas City's, you know, great strengths. We have such wonderful community resources and such a wonderful caring community. I'm always happy to see that. And of course, our V S B A Business Honor Roll honorees, thank you to you for all you do. I wanted to remind everybody that this Thursday at the Harris Pavilion Farmer's Market is the last day that is available to be purchasing from the Osborne C T E School-Based Enterprise folks. So, if you did not make it to last Thursday's Farmer's Market, which I could not because of an appointment, but I will be there at this Thursday's, and I hope to see many people there as well, supporting our Osborne C T E students. And I also wanted to do a shout out to STEM Night at Weems Elementary School. My whole family attended. I invited several families from the preschool that I manage. Everybody had a wonderful time. It was exactly the kind of event that can counter the narrative that's out there about the Manassas City Schools and what they have to offer. And I hope next year we consider maybe broadening the invitation to more of our, you know, private daycares and precares, to get more people who might not be thinking about the Manassas City Schools to come in, take a look, and see so much of really what makes us so amazing. But it was a great, it was a really a great event. So, thank you to everybody who put that together. My kids thank you too. They said it was the best school ever, and I really had to break their hearts. Sorry, kids, you are not going to Weems, but, yeah, so thank you for that. That's all for me.
Thank you. Mrs. Spall?
Yes, I just wanted to thank Principal Flugrath. I want to reiterate that I'm very proud of our evolved decisions for Osborne. Loss of learning time was a big topic regarding rumors of weapons in the past, not for, only for our school, but some of the schools that we visited, and this is no longer an issue, and I know it has to help. Today, I had the pleasure of interviewing some of our new school board reps, so I look for a new announcement regarding that exciting decision to come soon. Congratulations again to Emma, pre-K, O H S swimming and wrestling, Apple and Pear Award winners. You guys are all rocking our, the, the M C P S way of life. Looking forward to Arbor Day on Friday, where there's a celebration there. I want to say thank you to Mr. Ellenberger. I love joining the senior nights, and it's great to be able to see all the different sports teams at least once a season. Try to spread the love around there as well. Wanted to welcome our new Osborne basketball coach, who seems to be really great. And I wanted to give a shout out to Manassas Reeds coming up this weekend.
Thank you, Mrs. Spall. Mrs. Williams?
Okay, I, I am again trying to wrap my head around the class of twenty-thirty-six. And of course, congratulations to all of our Pear and Apple winners. I think it's always, it really makes one feel very, very good when their peers acknowledge them of what a great job they're doing. Of course, I have to, I know everybody's already congratulated Emma, but I have to congratulate her, because I grew up with my boys in the Sharks with her and her older brothers, and I remember her little tiny, tiny playing flag football with the boys. So, I have to definitely mention her. Swimming, wrestling, I love that our swim team is, has really improved over the years in that we've got some swimmers going to states, wrestling as well. I've, I've been fortunate enough to participate in states and watch our wrestlers in Virginia Beach after their season, so that is a lot of fun, and I'm just so proud of those, those boys. It's a lot, it's, it is a lot of hard work, whether you're a swimmer or wrestler, and I appreciate their efforts. And you truly are a, a student athlete when, when you participate, participate in those sports. I would like to express, Ms. Island was not able to be here this evening, so she apologizes that she was not able to be here. However, Mrs. Spall and I were with her this, this afternoon, and she gave us a lot of insight after being with us for a year. So, what else did I want to say? I believe everybody mentioned everything. You mentioned Manassas Reeds. I couldn't quite hear you, right? Saturday, it's this Saturday between nine and two, so please head out there if you have any time at all. I do want to, I, I do want to also share with you, as the liaison to the Planning Commission, I typically don't share much, because not a whole lot goes on there. The biggest thing I focus on are, are we getting proffers when they build, when they're approving all these residential projects? However, this one's a little special, and I'm not sure what City Council is going to do. However, there are twenty-four affordable apartment units right behind the stadium, the football field at Osborne High School. And the owner of that complex has received an offer of a builder who is trying to propose some affordable housing units, affordable housing units for City of Manassas employees to include teachers. And I will keep my eye on whether or not the City Council will approve this project. I, I, I think it's a tough decision. They haven't made the decision yet, but I will come back here and let everybody know what they decide. But I think that's a great first step if they do approve that for our city employees and teachers. And with that, I am done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Vice Chair Stevens?
Thank you. Real quick, Emma, you rock. Patrick, I've known Patrick since he was a little eight and under, and if you know swim team, you know what that is. And it's amazing being here in the City of Manassas when these kids come up and you know them, and you've known them for years, and you get to see, you have a reminder of who they were and who they are now, and all the amazing places they're going to go and the things they're going to do. So, way to go to all of you, the rest of our swimmers and our wrestlers. I tried to write down our wrestlers' names, but somehow at some point I got lost in that. So, it's amazing to see our kids. They're, they're rock stars. And speaking of rock stars, last Friday night, I got to be a judge at the M C P S art show. I judged the high school work, and that's the hardest job I think I've ever had. There were so amazing pieces. I could only do first through third and two honorable mentions. It was not an easy task, but I want to talk for a minute about the young lady who we gave the first place award to. Her image, which is actually going down to the V S B A art show, was to put it mildly moving. It was a tribute to her father that she'd lost, and it was a Day of the Dead illustration, painting, picture that she had done, and it was all about commemorating her father. And what was really, that was moving in and of itself, but then to talk to her teachers, some of whom had been with her in middle school, in intermediate school, and to hear her story, it was one of those that, that touches you in your heart, and to see where a child begins and where a child ends, and that our school staff, our teachers, and our support staff have made that possible. So, that was just an amazing moment. And then, I wanted to talk for a minute about autism. April is what we call Autism Awareness Month, but there's a push now to change the title, to change the title to Autism Acceptance Month. And one of the key pieces in Autism Acceptance Month is to not speak over autistic voices. So, what I read is not my writing, it's the writing of autistic voices, because they're the voices we need to hear. And in twenty-twenty-one, the C E O and President of the Autism Society of America, Christopher Banks, announced a shift in terminology from Autism Awareness to Autism Acceptance Month, excuse me, stating that, and I have to pull it up, I'm sorry, it's not already pulled up. He says, "The suggested shift in terminology urges them, urging the media to go along in order to ignite change in the lives of those with autism and their families. Awareness is knowing that somebody has autism. Acceptance is when you include a person with autism in your activities. Help them to develop in that community and to get that sense of connection to other people." So, you may ask yourself, well, what can I do to support autistic folks? First thing you can do, don't speak over autistic voices. The saying is nothing about us without us. When it comes to, excuse me, it means that decisions about autism need to be made by or with autistic people. It also means centering stories and experiences of autistic people. Avoid harmful labels and language. Low functioning and high functioning are labels often ascribed to autistic people. These are harmful, says the American Soci- the Autism Society of America, because we all have things we are good at, and we all have things we need help with. Going on, support autistic-run organizations and businesses. And this is something I found out as a mom of an autistic child. Look at who's on the board of the organizations you support. Make sure that the folks they're advocating for are on the board and their voices are, are heard. In addition, when you can, support autistic organizations that actually work with, not just for. The Autism Society of America points out that there's a group called Autistic Women and Non-Binary Network that you can support, and what they say is, there's so many of us that are trying to make a real big difference in this movement, so I'm really proud of everyone. I just want us to uplift each other and get the right message out. So, we need to move beyond being aware to accepting and recognizing that we're all different, and that's what makes us special. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Stevens. I have a few things. We did want to let the public know that the businesses that we voted to put on the Business Honor Roll will be invited to our May meeting and recognized at that time to receive letters and certificates from V S B A. Also, our Osborne Skills USA team competed last weekend, and they will also be honored at a future meeting. They came home with a lot of bling, and so I look forward to them joining us and being recognized for their efforts and for all their hard work. I also wanted to let everyone know that this weekend is, it's Manassas Reeds, but it's also a big yard sale weekend, and the Georgetown South community is having a yard sale and also food sales of a variety of different items to benefit one of our own. And she is Victoria Diaz, and she is our family liaison at Mayfield, and she's in need of our help, and we are going to help. If you have any items to donate for a yard sale, household items are great, furniture is great, they're not accepting clothing, but please contact the Georgetown South Community Center, and they will come pick it up from you. If you would like to order food, they'll have all that information too, and of course, it'll be on their social media site, so please keep that in mind for Saturday. Last Friday, I was at the Division Art Show, whoops, and fabulous, fabulous, and then followed it up with attending Osborne's, Osborne Theater's Spring Musical, which was the twenty-fifth annual Putnam County Spelling Bee, which they pulled people out of the audience to come participate, and I got to be one of those lucky people, and I'll be signing autographs after the meeting tonight. But it was totally fun to be made fun of, and I really enjoyed it, and the kids were great, and it was such an entertaining play. It's over with for this year, but please keep Osborne Theater in mind for future performances. We would like the whole, whole community to come out and support them and enjoy these performances. I also wanted to mention to my fellow school board members, Wednesday, I'm part of a V S B A cohort, and every school board member that is a member of V S B A is invited to be part of a cohort, and this is where we get together with other school board members in our region to share ideas, make comparisons, and to help each other out. So, if you're not already on a cohort with V S B A, I encourage you to do that. It's a great opportunity. And I think that's all I have for tonight. May is going to be a very busy month. I'm looking forward to all the celebrations ahead of us, and I thank everyone for being here tonight and watching on TV at home. And with that, I will ask for an adjournment.
Chair, I move that the City of School, School Board of the City of Manassas adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Brooks, seconded by Vice Chair Stevens, that the school board meeting adjourn. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries seven zero.